Again, I don't see why a town hall employee can be doing that. Why do we have to import someone from somewhere else around town? But the fact of the matter is, I think, I don't understand why the town hall isn't fully open based on the statistics that we've had over the last five months. There's, I just can't understand. So please, somebody explain to me, what is the reasoning?
Any other comments?
Well, I'm still waiting for some information about the hated children in public housing from Karen via Mary Wagon. They were supposed to get back to me about two weeks ago or something like that. So I'm still waiting for that. But I want, I want an answer right here and now as to what's going on with, you know, with this reopening. I think it would be most helpful, actually, to the school people to be able to say, you know, you're asking, I mean, people are asking to have schools reopened and what have you. And we were hiding here in a morgue-like situation.
Sure.
I think that's not a very good, you know, example to be setting.
Okay.
So what's, what's holding us up about opening?
We're not going to have a dialogue on this. You have an opportunity to make a comment, make a statement, and...
Is somebody going to answer me at some point then?
At some point, yes. Oh, we'll speak with the town administrator to make sure that he follows up with you to get the information that you need.
What, I cannot understand.
I'm sorry.
What is the reasoning for it? And why, why this cannot be answered to the, so the public knows why, why you're doing what you're doing?
I'm not going to get into a debate. You'll have to follow up with the town administrator.
Have to make their own judgment.
Okay. Anybody else have public comments? The next item on the agenda is Finance Committee and Budget Recommendation. So I'm going to call to the front table, members of the Finance Committee.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Robert Savar and I'm the chairman of the Finance Committee. You're not getting that? Did you hear that? My name is Robert Savar and I'm the chairman of the Finance Committee. Tonight I've brought with me Stephanie Clux and Sarah Coles, two of our finance members.
Good evening.
Dan gave us an opportunity this time to bring some things to attention to the selectmen that we'd like you to consider before you finalize your financial directives. If we go down the list quickly, number one, simply the things we've talked about before, which is the, or something, well, the water, water's new, but water, wastewater project and coastal infrastructure all got 100% support from the Finance Committee that these are all things that we should be pursuing aggressively to resolve. The coastal one is the one that we brought up as being something that's been kicked, the can that's been kicked down the road quite a bit. And it's time to actually focus on that and get some money set up for that to happen. The second thing we wanted to do, which we supported 100% again, was the reduction of the CPA and exemption of $100,000 to help offset the CPA costs and then hopefully to bring in wastewater and some of the other things at the same time, but to balance that out. Where we started to fall apart was how much more do we need to do? And one of the recommendations was we should consider either deferring CPA entirely for a few years because of COVID and wastewater and the school and some of these other things that are coming up, and/or some other way of deferring that to give people more relief. That came in a split vote of four-three. So in a sense, that's what started our conversation, I think, about maybe need for a poll, which is, we'll go to that at the very end, some type of town information. Now, the third thing we talked about was the fact that ME Small, we know, and Manichees are both in tough condition, but both properties add up to about 70 acres. And I sent some information out to the selectmen about the number of properties on the Cape that are that size, there are very few, that the town should set up and consider that as a opportunity to build commercial in there so we can build that commercial base a little bit, whether if it's a 55-plus or some other idea, but to consider that as two parcels together and what's the maximum we could use that for. Now, our fourth line item that we talked about, I think Sarah or Stephanie wants to come up and talk about. Excuse me.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to see you all. It's my first time in front of you all and I appreciate your support in being appointed to the committee. Mr. Chairman, so we saw in terms of the main, the first goal of expanded economic growth, development, and redevelopment efforts to increase year-round employment, tourism, and quality of life, we just felt that there were a couple of pieces that might be missing from the holistic view that it's important to also be investing in, if we're interested in year-round employment, then we have to be investing in year-round economic development because tourism isn't year-round. Not that there's anything wrong with tourism, but it's just a little bit contrary to that goal. So adding the idea of year-round economic development is an important piece to that. And then also just bearing in mind that a lot of businesspeople, if you talk to business people around town, their challenges in terms of finding people who can afford to live here and the challenges of if we want to, if we want to be able to incentivize and draw entrepreneurs to our town and grow year-round jobs, then we have to bear in mind what any businessperson is going to be thinking about. Can I afford to pay someone $25, $30 an hour so that they can afford to live here? And so year-round housing production has to be part of that conversation. So those were the, the main points that we just wanted to make sure was part of the holistic view that you all thought of this, you know, well-crafted document. And there were a couple of thoughts in there, just of examples for, you know, again, for example, the, the school property, you know, I don't think we just, you know, need to weigh on and off, you know, if it's used for commercial versus housing, mixed use both, but generally, you know, those, those could be used for any of the above. And as far as the, the piece about our broadband infrastructure, that that's going to be a really critical piece if we want to grow year-round jobs and, and year-round employers is having that, especially in a time of COVID, you know, we've seen. And I think the other piece, and I'll just speak for myself rather than the committee, is that I look at having... ...after seven to 10 years, then we're just making money that we can put towards wastewater or other infrastructure needs. So those are just the main points. I don't know if Sarah had anything else she wanted to add to that?
Thank you. Yeah, let me turn it over to the board and ask the board members.
Things that we didn't actually take a vote on, but we wanted to pass on.
Okay.
Oh, that the first things to come back on the, if money starts to free up, we wanted to start rescinding the cuts to the health services and in the food pantry, that type of thing. We didn't take a vote, but it was a general consensus that that should be our first priority to get the human services things back online as fast as possible. And the last one, you have an, oh no, I'm sorry, the assessors' office. We were looking for you to talk to the assessors' office also about the overlay fund and to see if you could get them to release some of the money because anything that gets released out of that right now, that is not in the budget. So if they were at least $400,000, $500,000, that's $400,000, $500,000 we could bring back immediately as soon as they release those funds. And then the final thing was that we were looking for a poll. And there's an example in here, but we didn't discuss the poll in any detail whatsoever. We feel that we need the town to give us some feedback on what their priorities are and where their tolerances are for the amount of money that we're going to be spending soon, which is, as you know, is hundreds of millions of dollars.
Great, thank you. I'm going to ask board members to comment or ask questions. I'll start with Eric.
My only real question, Robert, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you to the three of you for taking the time to be here. And I don't know, maybe you just have a couple of years of the CPA for, for a number of years. Were you going to elaborate on why you wanted, why you were investigating that and what you foresaw as being the benefit?
Yeah, this was primarily my idea, and I'll speak for myself, but I brought it to the attention of the board. My thought was wastewater eventually, if we can get this into the town system, is a user-paid service. If we could, and we all admit, things are kind of not normal right now and certainly financially, maybe many of us are under a lot more stress than what we used to be. So my thought was if we deferred CPA a little bit or gave a relaxed that to the cost of the town, brought wastewater up at the same town time, we would actually not be affecting them dramatically in any way whatsoever on their actual tax bill. Then after three or four years of getting the wastewater in, then we bring this back and the wastewater should be paying for itself based on betterment fees, user fees, right? That type of stuff. And again, then what we've accomplished is we've got the wastewater in and we didn't burden anybody. Personally, I think that recreation, open space, housing, and historic, all great ideas, but they don't actually help the town financially. They're actually more of a burden to the town and this is a tough time for that. It's also going to be something I think we're going to be working on for maybe forever, for as long as we're doing this. Those things are going to be on our list of things to make better. So a phase in or a drop-off of three to years to affect the residency immediately, I thought, was something that could be looked into.
I guess my only thought on that would be whether or not suspending it, and I imagine it would, would disqualify us from receiving any state matching funds. And I don't know that it's worth even making.
It would, but the dollars are not as big as you think they are. And I'm also anticipating that the state is probably not going to be as generous as what they're, they have been in the past. Just an anticipation, but that's, I think it's a pretty solid assumption that the state is not going to be as generous with their funds as they have been in the past.
I don't disagree that that's a possibility. I just, I guess I'd have to give it more thought, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Eric, did you want to say something?
I'll speak to the, as Robert pointed out, this was a three-four vote, or a four-three vote within the committee, so I'm going to speak to the other side of it. We did, I did ask Dan about this when we did discuss it, and he said that it would take some kind of town-wide vote in order to, to bring it back. And our concern largely was around bringing it back in the three to four years. If we would have to put it back on a town-wide vote at town meeting, whether or not this was something that, like, once you take it away and you dangle this tax reduction in front of the townspeople, whether or not they would actually vote to bring it back in a few years. And then going directly to your point of what we would lose on the state level of matching funds, if any, or like what kind of money we'd be getting from the state for CPA, as well as what kind of detriment we would get to the town as a whole if this is something that we walked back. And frankly, I'm personally, and again, speaking from my individual capacity, would be concerned that once we took this away, we'd never bring it back. No one would ever vote for it.
I tend to lean in the same direction.
On that point, we did have, I think that that was part of the financing plan that we first explored when Rich laid out some really great options for us. And we looked at it and for the reasons exactly that have been spoken, we decided at this time we didn't need to, to do that. As far as the finances coming forward, the majority of the big-ticket items other than wastewater, I think, at this point have been addressed. And wastewater, as you know, we've tried to do a tax-neutral plan for that. So I, I just want to say, first of all, I think this is a great time to meet because we do, we will soon do our budget directive and typically we haven't met in advance of that. So I think that this information is helpful. I read this memo and I think most of everything that you've identified here is, is something that's already been discussed and, and almost adopted by our board in some way or another. Other than, other than that, I'm not, I'm a little bit concerned about a questionnaire. We've done a lot of surveys in the past. I'm not sure, I'd be interested in what, what would we do with the results? And, you know, we're starting a visioning process and hopefully that's a community-wide visioning process. So I think a lot of the data that you're probably searching for will come from that, but it seems to me that a lot of what you're looking for is basically to ask whether or not, you know, a lot of families right now, when you look at some of these questions, housing assistance, food assistance, some of them are in all of the above, you know, I mean, so I think we need to forge forward with, with what our, our plans are because I think our plans are very conservative and very conscientious of how the taxpayers, how affordable it is for the taxpayers. Our board has had a policy for many years about no proposition, two-and-a-half overrides. Now, at some point in time, perhaps that is going to not be, we're not able, going to be able to accomplish that anymore, but we've been successful with it for a long time and our staff has done a remarkable job of finding other ways to fund things other than the DPW facility and the school building, which we got passed. You know, thank goodness they're passed and yes, it's going to add to the taxes, but we're hoping to move forward with all of these plans within...
Great. Mike?
First comment I'll make is I agree with Eric and Sarah about suspension of the CPA tax for the same reasons that Sarah's identified. I wouldn't want to lose matching funds and sometimes when you lose that revenue, it's difficult to get it back, especially when recovery from this Corona episode is probably going to take multiple years. It's not going to, it's not going to come back overnight. Wastewater looms large. It's still a project with a great deal of uncertainty. It means to be seen whether Harvard is going to fully buy into it, whether it's going to become a two-town project or even a one-town project. What the options are. I think once we find out what their level of commitment is, we ought to have Rich being vintage back, who I understand would be available on a consulting basis to rework the numbers. Are going to be constantly changing as time, as time goes on. Respect to commercial development on these school sites, I think you might have some serious problems there, right? As far as I know, that's owned residential. So to create some kind of revenue-generating enterprise, you're probably more or less looking at some kind of housing and, you know, based, based on the revenue coming back to the town that I've seen from, from other housing projects, it's not very much money. It's more to meet a social need that the town invests in, in those kinds of, in those kinds of projects. But another key thing is, I remember I found you, you know, he'd have a sense of where we stood in terms of revenues. We, we did our budget. He was saying he would have a sense of where we were.
We'll know that a little bit later.
Yeah, yeah. And so we don't really have that information. There's a lot of people down here, certainly, but the question is, you know, how much money's being spent, how much revenue's being generated? Nobody really knows. So keeping that in mind, I mean, I appreciate everything that you did do and I'm sure you realize, as I do, that there's a lot of uncertainty that, that we have to uncover before we go forward and, and make determinations on some of these larger items. But that's, that's pretty much what I see right now.
Thanks, Mike. In terms of my comments, I'd like to start with, first of all, thank you, the fact that you've been meeting and deliberating over the summer, when you have all these other demands. Very commendable. I very much appreciate that and it's great to see the energy and the blood behind this project. So we appreciate you having, engaging with us. The thing that we've been sort of wrestling with, this whole subject of coastal infrastructure, just that I understand what you're suggesting here is that the best way to address it is from a debt runoff, so that as we pay down debt, that we are able to address debt effectively. I think we need to look at, I mean, that's something that we're going to need to, I'll take that. Did you, have you sort of put together at least an idea or a list of what we're talking about in terms of...
Cal has brought in.
Cal has that.
Yeah, I have, I'm wait, Carl's generating a, like, a more updated detail.
I do think it's worth having more discussion about coastal infrastructure, the nature of the project, and those are all extensive, you know, those are different. And we can look at a range of recommendations and thoughts about that. I'm not sure the debt, you know, sliding it there as the, it would be nice if we had more options as well. So my only recommendation would be to perhaps revisit that and see if there might be some other options, other approaches that might be useful or make sense for us to consider. But beyond this, I think it's terrific to get your recommendations to get, as, as has been said before, I think it's great for us to get your recommendations and thoughts now, before we develop a budget plan, 100% of what you're thinking in. I also think that some of these questions, they may very well, I think a conversation we can have later is with, when we talk about visioning, you know, some of these questions may very well be relevant. We will be engaged in survey and dialogue with the community to get a sense of their priorities, which is more or less what you suggested that you think we need to do, to some degree, we're going to be getting into that. So if you want to, you know, stick around for the, that item when it comes up in a little bit, or you can watch it on TV, you know, in the safety of your home.
Coastal background sound that we, I've been in there once in a while. That is appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Is that what that was? It was a coastal sea breeze? Is that what that was? Okay, thank you. Thank you for providing that.
The, one thing about Tracy, I think you're not looking as long down the line as we are, and that's why the poll is more important. Yeah, we got past the schools and stuff like that, but we're looking at fire department, police department range, library, ME Small, coastal, and the water. I mean, as you look farther down, that number is not just the 140 million we need for the wastewater, there's another $100 million and stuff on that list. And that's where I'm trying to find out tolerances. You know, library, police, what's your tolerance? Do you want to do both?
No, I hear you. No, your point's well taken.
I mean, to that point, though, we have, we have a capital budget plan, a five-year capital budget plan. We have a hearing on that. So a lot of, a lot of this has been, I'm not saying, obviously more information's always better, but sometimes when you ask questions that are out there, it, it can give false information. You know, you don't always get the whole picture, so.
Right now, we're dealing with zero and that's part of the problem. We don't, we're not getting, we need more feedback, I think, of what, basically is what I got out of the Finance Committee is we're looking for that feedback.
No, I hear you.
If we're not the right way, then help us get it some, well, some other way. Because we can't look at just the taxes and who's paid and who hasn't because the state actually allowed you not to have to pay your real estate taxes on time. Usually that would be a good indicator. Indicators would be how many cars have been bought and stuff like that, but that's not a good indicator right now.
I understand.
So...
No, we, we get the point. Like I said, I think there may be a way to address some of this stuff through the, the whole visioning process that we're going through. So let's, let's at least look at that in the context of visioning.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for coming tonight. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Dennis Yarmuth Schools and an update on the reopening plans. We're going to do some cleaning, is that the, yes, let us, no? Maybe not.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Your spritzer.
I know.
Yep.
Oh, thank you.
A pump sprayer. Little pump sprayer full of disinfectant.
Well done, Tracy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, the floor's yours. Please, for the TV audience, please introduce yourselves and we'll get going.
So Carol Woodbury, hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Ken Janks, Assistant Superintendent.
And thank you for inviting us tonight to talk about our reopening plan. It's been a work in progress since the beginning of the summer for sure. A lot has changed. You saw on the first slide that we got some guidance about reopening in July, July 24th, a month later. We have a lot more information than we did through July. This slide is from the John Hopkins Corona Research Center. And as you can see, there's a little arrow pointing to Massachusetts and...
Give me the microphone, please.
Okay, we'll come a little closer. As you can see from the slide, Massachusetts has done really pretty well in comparison to a lot of other states. This was on May 12th. Again, a lot has changed since then, but we're still, as a state, in a very, very good place. So, Ken, excellent. One of the things that... One of the things that the governor did recently was to, with the help of the DPH and the COVID-19 Command Center, come up with a metric that we could use in terms of what kind of plan we should have when we're reopening school. And they created a map, and these are the, the pieces, whether you're in the red zone, the yellow zone, the green zone, or the unshaded. Unshaded, of course, is the best, green is really good, too. And when you're in red, they're suggesting that we need to be all at home, and our students need to be learning remotely. When we're in the yellow or the green even, you can do remote or hybrid. I'll talk a little bit about those different plans in a little bit. Or at the bottom, green and shaded, you can be full-time in person or hybrid, and hybrid is mostly if you can't fit everybody in with the appropriate physical distancing. So, next slide. And you can see where we are, Dennis and Yarmouth, down on the Cape. Actually, most of the Cape has done really, really well. What I think we have to be proud of here on Cape Cod is that I think that when we were asked to, in March, starting in March, to be physically distant from each other and take all of the protocols seriously, I think our, our citizens did a really good job. And if you think about our population here, close to 50% of us are over the age of 55, which puts us at a really pretty high risk, yet we've done very, very well here. And that means that people are following the rules, and that's very much appreciated. These are just from last week, on August 19th, specific data about Dennis and Yarmouth. We're getting health data from the Barnstable County on a weekly basis now, and as you can see, again, in terms of change in percent positivity, we continue to go lower, which is also good for, for us and good for us in our consideration with opening school. I guess we'll just pass by this, I don't know if we can really get that going. There was a nice little video, it's on our website, some of the doctors and pediatricians talking about the importance of getting kids back to school. And, you know, we're all weighing out all the various risks. But we know that by the time our students come back to school on September 16th, they will have been out of school for six months. That's a really long time for our kids. We had a, a task force. This outlines our commitment to action from the task force. There were 58 people, I'd like to give them a shout out. They spent quite a few hours going over plans and trying to help us decide how to reopen our schools. And our big thing is, is that if we do all of these things, that we'll provide safe and supportive in-person for instruction for as many students as possible, or for all of those who wish to have it. Ken could talk a little bit more about some of the critical health and safety preparation as he's had, as a point person on that.
So, without getting into excruciating detail, but I will cover some of the details. As we all know, the goal is, we want students who want to come to school to be able to come to school safely, and that's our purpose. And if you look at our approach, you can see those five key areas there. First off, will you have what you need? Yes, we have about the first, the goal is to have in our stockpile the first 18 months of PPE. And we use significant federal grants to do that, because otherwise, no school, including us, would have been in a position to go, oh, our first batch of 72,000 masks and 3,500 face shields are in. The N95s for nurses and those working with students where fluid contact may be an issue. The disposable gowns, the washable gowns, all those kinds of things. Sanitizer, I know the town sides were going through the same stress for much of the spring, getting enough sanitizer in stock to have, you know, high-volume areas have those wall-mounted units, having enough sanitizer in every classroom. We will work with people on the students, hand sanitizer, you know, you need a dime-shaped, sized amount, you do a little squirt and put it on there. But I never thought we would be talking about 400 to 500 gallons of sanitizer in stock and available. Wipes, again, I know this is something all of us have, all spring, we're working through, building up stockpiles, trying to get them. We will have antibacterial surface wipes available for people. And plexi dividers in some key areas. To be candid, we're not doing the plexi three-sided thing for students. At some point, if people are washing their hands or using sanitizer and wearing masks and face shields in some cases, especially in the lower grades, a two-foot-high shield, you may feel better, and we have them in areas where there might be some contact, and, you know, secretaries and people who see a high volume of different people during the day have probably like your town halls, and we see them in every store, the sneeze guards, if you will, the shields. But we feel truly, based on the science, we're providing the equipment for our students and our staff that's reasonable and allows education to take place. Facility cleaning and disinfecting, we've added additional custodial hours, the equivalent of probably five full-time people, again, with the federal grants. I'll mention a little bit of that later, but as we all imagine, every school, the reality to open, no one budgeted about $1 million for additional PPE and technology and such. Those federal grants, the first $561,000 was used to support this, a significant amount of the second grant of some $700,000, the allotment that we received specifically from the federal government, get your PPE, don't say that's why you couldn't open school. So otherwise, again, I just want to keep putting that out there, it's not as if any of us would have had reserves in our budgets to do that kind of purchasing. There'll be high-touch surfaces, the additional custodial hours is fundamentally having almost the equivalent of a full-time person every day just going around, constantly, you know, making a loop. If you think of ME Small, and it's sort of this giant hexagon, just really going through all day long, constantly, along with the regular day custodian doing cleanup, high-touch surfaces are constantly being disinfected, restrooms are being disinfected throughout the day. All those practical pieces, because if you have 200 to, say, 400, 500 people in a building, you need to do that all day long, and you need to do it consistently. You can't wait to sort of, everybody goes home and then do a big cleanup. So those pieces are in play. Again, thankfully, we had those monies. The HVAC systems and air circulation, we know in every public building, that's a, a high-interest area. We know the mass teachers and others across the country have said, yes, make sure the HVAC systems work. We have over 500 filters, they're all in our uni vents, if you think of that classroom venting heating unit, they're all being replaced over the next two to three weeks. We deliberately waited right to the end, after most of the summer clean was done and all that. The systems are being addressed and sanitized and cleaned, so those will be there. We have six buildings of various ages, all of which are up to code and meet the code when they were built, and so you use the best filters you can. I've had more discussions with people who've never talked about filters in our lives, about, oh, is this a MERV 13, or is it a this or that? And the, the systems we have in place, we feel very confident, they're clean, the filter's being changed, they provide the necessary air exchange. We also commissioned an independent study, if you will, with an outside agency, it's actually under Perkins Eastman, who's doing the schoolwork. They were one of the companies listed by the state as, if you want to make sure people are saying, well, you're, how do we know that's true? To be candid, I'll just put that out there. Yes, we're having an independent group of engineers come in, talk about airflow and, you know, air exchange per hour in all the key spaces. So that way, we'll release that as soon as that's available. They're wrapping that up, hopefully, this week. And so, again, the air circulation, that's a critical part of public buildings, especially with our students and staff in there. Windows, it's advised you open all the windows all the time. As a guy who spent the last five years of his life telling people, don't open the windows during the day when the air circulation's working, we'll work with that. We're making sure the windows are all functional. Some of our buildings have windows that weren't designed to be open, so that is a limitation. And then there's some buildings that, quite frankly, they're very old, and we need, we're doing some work on the windows as well. Creating cohorts, the state guidance is really clear. You want identifiable blocks of students for contact tracing, if that were to be something that's needed down the road. So that is on buses, so there's 23 of the same students all the time on the buses, so if someone were to be infected, you can say, here's the limited contact grouping. Classrooms, most of our classrooms are going to have eight to 14 students in them because of the physical distancing. And again, that group pretty much stays together much of the day. The only place you really can't do that consistently is a high school, by the nature of their courses, and even that, they've done some miracle work, coming up with a schedule that does not unduly restrict students, but tends to keep the same groups of students traveling together. So if there were cases, and I guess I feel I need to say, we all know how this will play, if hundreds and hundreds of people are coming together, eventually, someone will have a case and will follow all the procedures. I have a blue binder, I didn't bring it, it's about two inches thick of all the state guidance, and it's great, because it really is, oh, if someone had, was tested positive eventually because they rode a bus, here's what you do, here's what you do for classrooms, here's what you do. So we're, we feel we have good procedures we can follow. We've worked with the Board of Health, I can't say enough about Bruce and Mallory, they, I know they're busy these days, but they've carved out lots of time to come into our buildings, to meet with us, to work closely with Kristen Dwyer, our district nurse, the same for the Kristen and Carrie over on the other side of the river. But we feel like we're making sure everybody's in the process, we're designing systems that, I know people have, there's a lot of emotion out there about students coming back. We wouldn't have them come back if we didn't think it was safe. And here's what we're doing to say, we can look people in the eye and say, we're following the appropriate steps, we're taking good measures, and having students in school, those who want to be there, is something we can do. And again, physical distancing is really reshaping our world. We've all had training probably since about March 16th on it. Everywhere you go, we'll have the same thing, the classrooms, you'll see some pictures in a second. I'll warn you, the pictures were taken as we were doing summer clean, so the stuff on counters and windows that are all gone now, but we got it off the floor so we could clean and buff the floors. Six feet, the state had issued an advisory about, it lasted about a week, that said, three feet with masks, the science says that actually is viable, that's a reasonable step to take. I think people are so ingrained to the six-foot distancing right now, in the end, that was sort of withdrawn unofficially, and we adopted early on, let's go with the six-foot model, because you don't want a lot of doubt out there, people thinking, I just don't think that's safe. So six foot is sort of the golden measurement for everything we're trying to accomplish in the vast majority of places. There'll be signs on the floor, we'll have the little DY logos and a lot of those symbols, symbols in different language about, you know, here, six feet away, there's another one. Much like you, we'll go through huge amounts of miles of blue tape as time goes on, there'll be traffic flow signs in all the buildings. And again, I feel like I am giving a lot of detail, but I want the, the board to know, we've really worked through all the advisories with our teams, and we feel we're in a good place to follow the advisories, that students can come in, they can be educated, again, see each other after six months, have live instruction. And finally, we're actually having a, it's funny, I know there's a code enforcement group sometimes when you're working with other, other groups in towns, but tomorrow we'll be meeting, you know, with Mark Grills and Kevin Huck from the fire department and that, to make sure they see our plan, if they have advisories or things we have to make different changes to, because we have some time before we open to make sure everything's by the book, if you will. Here's one of those pictures to give you some insight, that was an early picture, that front desk by the teacher desk is no longer there because you have the six-foot gap, but those were our initial runs. We took these, we had shared these with, I think, the committee very early on, and the process, you have to imagine, a classroom that used to have about 24 desks or 22 desks, it's a limiting factor to how many students you can physically fit in the building. There's a view with trap tables, in some respects, it may seem interesting, the trapezoid tables are easier to work with, because the student has a lot of workspace, and it just feels more natural to them when they're separated out a little bit. And that's important, because some of the students do need that workspace, especially the younger grades sometimes. That's one of the elementary classrooms, as you can see. That's the one I'm talking about, all that stuff on the counter and all that, that's gone now. But that was an early picture, you can see Principal Riley at ME Small there, at the front of the room, kind of taking that role as a teacher. And you can see, again, there's 11 desks, actually, there's one more trap table that's not there in the picture, so students are appropriately distanced, they can have their materials out, especially the younger students who sometimes come with either a backpack or some other things. And just another picture of one of the early models, that's not accurate, that was the original, when you were looking at some of the three-foot distancing early on to give you the visual of, it's really a study in logistics, it's about the capacity, the square footage of room, how big is your school bus? And you can see, like, early on, it looked like, oh, with that 50, the three-foot rule, you can fit 15 or 16 students in a classroom. That was relatively simple. Not so much now.
So, one of the things that happened with the Department of Ed, as Ken said, the advisories come quickly, and they're all like about 20 pages apiece, so the reading, if you, if you're not good at speed reading, you'd be lost in this environment. As you can see, obviously, the best-case scenario would be if we were returning without restrictions. Obviously, we're not there yet. So the commissioner said to the superintendents, you have to create three plans. The first plan would be what you're going to do for all in-person learning with all the new safety requirements, which Ken's talked a lot about. But in addition to that, you have to also offer a full remote. So even if you're offering in-person, you have to offer full remote, so that all of your parents can have a choice. Hybrid is technically most of the time used when you can't fit all your students in. We have that problem at the high school. Fitting 1,000 students into the high school with the social distancing, we can't make that work. So we've created a hybrid plan for the high school, but simultaneously, you have to offer an opportunity for especially your very vulnerable populations, such as our students with complex care needs and things like that, to be in five days a week, along with a full remote plan for those who might choose it. And finally, the full remote is really only recommended when you think that the metrics are such that your kids would not be safe at school, or if the governor says, everybody go home, we've, we're issuing another stay-at-home order or something like that. So this is what we learned, we had to do a feasibility study first, as Ken said, that's why we were trying the desks in various ways and places. We can achieve the physical distance requirements for all students in K to 7. Our preschool and grades eight through 12 will require a hybrid model in order for us to achieve that physical distance requirement. And our vulnerable populations are certainly going to be encouraged to come to school every day, but that is a parent choice. In eight through 12, we're still exploring the possibility of some students being what we're calling remote in-person. As you all know, if you've raised teenagers, it's not always great to have them home if you have to be at work. And so for some parents, they might prefer that their students were at school, and if we can achieve that, we will. We haven't managed it quite yet, but we were, we're still working on that piece. We did, we, we've done a number of surveys at this point. These were really the initial survey results, actually, we're still going through the most recent survey results to see where we stand. We asked parents to actually make a commitment, and, and that's a bit of, bit of a struggle, because people, there's a lot of fear out there, as everybody knows. So it's a bit of a struggle. But as you can see, we had a large number of students in pre-K to 7 whose families were still undecided at that point in time. And for our grades eight through 12, a few less undecided, but really, look at the number of remote. And what we're finding is it seems like about two-thirds of our families overall would like their students to come back in person, which isn't really a surprise to me, some of the things that I heard in, in the spring. And as it stands right now, or at the time of this survey, and again, we're working through it with individual cases, 76% of our staff said that they were able to return to work. We had a few in high risk, and some people, the other category tends to be childcare issues. As you may realize, especially here on the Cape, it was always hard to get childcare even before COVID.
Yes.
And now, a lot of the childcare facilities have closed. So we're really in a little bit of a world of hurt. We thought about trying to do that a little bit ourselves, but we really just don't have the space for it now, with the, with the social distancing that we have to do for our, our students. So we're, we're trying to work through that with everybody and... So we're, we're trying to work through that with everybody and see where we go. So this was the vote that the school committee took on August 6th. And our plan is online, and if you go onto our website, you'll be able to look deeply at the plan. Has a lot of things on it, and we're adding to it all the time. The next, the next slide is really just an example of like, there's a bunch of different family supports. We're working through an FAQ document right now, and that'll be on there as well. Along with all of our student, parents' student handbooks have to have addendums with things like the safety protocols and things like that. We'll be going before the school committee probably next Monday night for a mask policy. So, yeah, very exciting, so over to you, Ken.
There's no strong opinions on that one. PD, so the state realized early on that while everybody did their best in March, that was unexpected, that no one at the time probably anticipated we were going to be out the rest of the school year when it first began. And so the commissioner, early on, the state realized you have to have some beefy training for people. It's, they need that training, the teachers have requested that, it's not as if someone was saying, oh, we don't need to be trained. And so the decision was made, the 180 school days, that's in a sense been the cornerstone of education in Massachusetts. This year would be 170 students' school days, and you had 10 days to do all kinds of professional development. Because if you think of it truly transitioning to effective remote learning, the technology, and what are the best ways to use the technology? Are there common platforms everybody needs to use so families can go, oh, there's not three different platforms because I have five different teachers with various things? And so this is allowing us to really get everybody there. We're doing a lot of it Zoom right now because we want to finish the cleaning and finalizing of the buildings. But really give people the opportunity for training, time to let it percolate, time for questioning. We are an iPad district, as you know, I'll take a brief deviation, if you will, from some of this. And part of it is we'll be doing some training for families. Are you comfortable with the iPad? Here's the capacity of the iPad. Here's how families can use, especially families that haven't used it before, Google Classroom, which is very common with teachers and students, especially in the older grades. One of the things, again, make that federal money is to, to cover our bases in case we ended up having to go all remote at some time this year. There'll be iPads from, for everybody from K to 12. Okay, and you can see again, the state, the commissioner, the remote, those things had to be there. And we're doing the collective bargaining pieces, that 10 days, the student year, according to the Commonwealth, had to start by September 16th, and that's our opening day listed. That could be remote, that could be hybrid, that could be the mix. And right now, we're still working through the logistics of what's the bus capacity, can we get them all there? The stress we're having right now, if you will, is there's about 500 families who didn't respond to the survey. And out of 2,800 students who attend the building, you can see that really skews all the final plans. So we'll be done, everybody's being called, schools have done a great job with that, but those pieces are there. Again, I think I've covered a lot of it, but just keeping in mind, because I know the time is limited, everything's been changed. How do you do transitions, how do you set up your classrooms, how do you handle breakfast? We, it's important to us that students still get that grab-and-go breakfast on the way in. But if you think of it, and everybody's probably seen the legendary picture of hallways in Georgia out of school, that's not what we're doing. People will be traveling at distances, dismissals will take a little bit longer because you'll do it by wings and sections. So all of these pieces we've looked at, we've had to make some decisions, we worked with groups, how do you handle dismissal? How do you handle the medical waiting room, then no longer calling it the quarantine room? How do we make sure that the students and folks who need emotional support are getting it along with the academics? We're still working through what art, music, PE in the library look like, because you think of it, those areas, you can't do chorus right now. So what's that look like, short-term, long-term? What about phys ed? Students going outside, well, you don't want 300 students outside. We've spent a lot of time working on security about kind of keeping people protected inside, but outside is good. So where are your radios, and how do you handle that, and how many go outside at any given time? So those factors, we've worked through in each building, trying to get some input, but also saying at some point, what's a practical thing that we could put the stamp of? We're comfortable it's safe on this. My existence is dominated by these yellow vehicles, and they used to carry about, you know, they say they can carry about 72 people. Real-sized people, that's about 55 in the real world. And you can see the dots there, what's really limiting us is now we're down to 32% capacity, about 23 students. Younger grades, probably an assistant, because taking that first grader and say, you're supposed to get on the bus, go to the back, last seat, sit in the stickered space, and then get on that way and leave that way and keep your mask on, they'll need some guidance and work with that. That's why those family surveys are critical to us. We're still getting close to, we think we can get everybody to the places on time and not have to do double runs to get everybody to a school. But we're finalizing that, that could change a little bit. Our surveys are running pretty consistently, 20% of people not coming to school and probably another 20% not taking a bus. That actually allows the system to work, because with the physical distancing and the 23 seats on a bus, that's what you have. We couldn't just add buses, no one's able to do that, even if there was lots of money. Most bus drivers are about 62 to 65. And you can see, that's why there's been a shortage across the country in the last couple of years. So those, it's very mundane, it's a limiting factor, we're working through it, and we think we'll be in a good place. The most difficult challenge, of course, is the specialized, if you think of those small buses you sometimes see, they used to hold 14 students, now there's six to eight, depending on the configuration of the bus. Those runs are getting more complicated. And finally, even though the most recent advisories have come out about sports and activities and all those things, a lot of question marks are still out there. Because if you're following all these procedures during the day, it's hard to sort of not follow them in the afternoon because of other programs. So I know we've probably gone on a substantial amount, but everything's being looked at. We will not open, I cannot support something that would be unsafe. I feel sometimes in all the emotion out there, we're all doing it, I know you as a board, and people are dealing with it. But I would like to say that large numbers of people since March have gone to work every day, and they've worn masks, they've washed their hands, and they've followed careful procedures. And our two towns have a very, very, very low incident rate. I think it was like three or four cases at some points, maybe not even that many. And so if we're diligent, and we follow the right protocols, I think we can mirror that in the schools.
So just the last thing, in our plan, you'll see a lot of different protocols for what to do when something happens. And that's a really important piece too, and as Ken said, I'd like to also give the shout-out to Bruce and Kristen from Yarmouth and Dennis. Just, they've been, they've done yeoman's work with us, and without them, you know, so we've walked through all our protocols with them. We've, they've visited the schools to identify, help us identify, this is the great isolation room, not called the isolation room anymore, called the, called the medical waiting room, and that's it.
That's great, thank you.
That's what we got.
Very good, thank you. I'm going to go to the board, Mike, any questions?
I'm, I'm happy that I'm not the person that's got to make all these decisions, either at the state level or the local level, because it's inordinately complicated. But just a few questions. In terms of the hybrid model, how is that going to work? A teacher's going to teach a normal classroom, who's going to be teaching the virtual classroom? Is it this, is that teacher's actual instruction going to be transmitted at the same time via iPad to the students that aren't present? Or is there going to be some pre-taped, if you will, lesson that goes to those students?
It's going to be a couple of different things. First of all, of course, we're still in negotiations with our staff about what will have to happen. But I'll take the high school, for example, we've heard a lot from high school folks that what they would like to do is have some kind of a camera that while they're teaching, this group that's in front of them, the kids at home can also be watching remotely. If we can pull that off, that would be great, we're, we've been pricing out the cameras, they're about $800 apiece. We have about 80 teachers at the high school. It may end up being a little on the cost prohibitive side, but in addition to that, there, there can be other people who, as you saw in the staff survey, we have some people who might have to be home for their own health reasons. So they may become the remote teachers, so they're working through their iPads to the homes with the students with their iPads. So they may be, there may be a cadre of just remote teachers who deal with all the remote. The high school model seems to be more of a day-in, some remote work at home. On Wednesdays, what the high school teachers want to do is have both sets. So say I'm the algebra teacher, and I have cohort A and cohort B, Monday and Tuesday. On Wednesday, I want all of those kids together, so I can do a variety of things with the whole group, so.
So they'll be remote?
They'll be remote. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be probably, in most cases, it's going to be a group of teachers that are doing the remote, and a group of teachers that are doing in-person. However, the high school lends itself to different things. So like, say first period, I have an in-person class, second period, I could have a remote class, so.
So what happens to the students that you had in the first period while you're doing the remote class?
They're going to their second-period class in person, somewhere else in the building.
Rotating.
Actually, they're not going anywhere in the building, the teachers are coming to them.
Often, in many cases, teachers are moving because you don't want to keep moving the kids.
You mentioned you had a binder on protocol with various scenarios that could develop. If you get a kid in a class that gets diagnosed with the virus, what's the response at that point?
Well fundamentally, so say I'm the student, I'm assuming, I don't know if you're saying, so I feel ill, I go down to the nurse. Quick screening, they go to the medical waiting room, the isolation room, if you will. If they're leaving, if they have the COVID symptoms, anything remotely suggesting COVID, people are called. Now you know the cohort, so all the families are identified, called and said, by the way, someone left ill with some potential COVID symptoms today, or not. I'll be candid, we had a summer program, and the student with allergies, and it, it was good to do some of our summer programs to work through. That was a great stress inducer for everybody involved, and it ended up being cleared by a doctor, it wasn't anything related to COVID, it was an allergy, it was those things. So everybody gets notified, they're not sent home immediately because you don't know. You try to limit that, ideally, what we'd also, we've looked at having some capacity so you could, okay, do a quick clean of that room, disinfecting right away, have an alternative space for people. But everybody's kept in the loop, and then, you know, appropriate authorities are notified. The testing, the county is working with everybody, we have a, I think, a Zoom tomorrow evening about, sort of, you probably read about sort of like the rapid response team that can come and get testing done very quickly. Because otherwise, that student may go home and you're waiting two or three days for the test. That's the practical reality, we know, it's like anybody with an office who's dealt with that. While you're waiting for the test, it's, people aren't sure, like, what should I do? Was I infected, was I not infected? And then if the test comes back positive, that whole group, there's protocols for them, they're not going to be in school for a certain number of days. And so it's really delineated through the Department of Public Health and the local health people.
They'd probably sequester that entire class for probably a couple of weeks or so.
Up with that, right.
What about masks, especially with younger children? Or let's say you have behavioral children, and we all have those at some point in time in schools, and, and they're, they're not going to comply. So what, what do you do then? Does the teacher like have to approach that kid and, and kind of expose his or herself to a, a risk to be able to deal with that kid? Is there any guidance on that?
There is some guidance on that. In some cases, if a student has something that prevents them from being able to wear a mask, there would be a doctor's letter stating that. One of the reasons why we bought, Ken mentioned not only the masks, but the shields, that's part of the reason why we took that extra step. Was because we want to keep our staff safe. As Ken mentioned, we did have some summer programs that were extended school year for some of our most vulnerable students. And the programs went very, very well, and sometimes the kids did not have their masks on in that, in those kind of programs. Nobody got sick. The staff took their precautions on their end to make sure that they were protected. And, you know, the shield is just an extra layer of protection, especially if a student can't wear a mask or you are up close with the student anyway. So we're providing those kinds of things so that people can feel safe. And I, again, it, now, that wasn't on scale of what opening school will be like. But I don't think we have that many students that will be in that kind of a situation. Those are highly specialized programs, and the people that we hire to go in those programs are very highly trained as well.
In terms of the teaching staff itself, are there, are you getting many teachers who are, are there a significant number of teachers who say, I don't want to go into a live classroom situation for health reasons, or I have this problem or this condition? Is there much of that going on, and how is that being dealt with?
Well, we looked at the list with our HR director today, and I think we were both surprised that there was as little, as few people as there were on the list of people who, who really can't come back. And so we're also in the process in the HR department of, again, verifying with each person, you know, if there is a reason why they can't, there does have to be a doctor's verification and things like that. And then we will work with people to see where we can align staff and students with the appropriate, you know, teachers have to have the appropriate certification for the jobs that they do, but we're pretty confident that we can make it all align.
Could some of those teachers end up being the remote instructors?
Absolutely.
I have more, but I'll.
You're on a roll here, Mr. Stone.
It's very complex.
It is.
In Barnstable, I thought, I thought I read in the paper that they were going to go two days on in the high school level, and then Wednesdays was going to be nobody there, they were going to clean the building, and then Friday, there was Thursday and Friday, there were going to be another live, live session. So that, I guess, the kids were going to be going two days a week in person, then Wednesdays was going to be closed, and then I believe the other two days was remote. Is that what the Barnstable model was, or, or were they going to go live those other two days?
I think they're going live those other two days, I don't know that for sure.
Do we have any shutdown like that in the middle of the week for cleaning?
We're doing the same, the same model at our high school.
Same model as Barnstable.
Sandwich is doing that too. Yeah, so kids are in, the green team and the white team, surprisingly. So the, one of the teams, whichever it is, the green team would go in person on Monday and Thursday. The white team, let's say, goes on Tuesday and Friday in person. And the, the middle day is remote for everyone, and that's when I talked about how the teachers want to get the cohort A and B, or the green team and the white team are all together in remote on Wednesdays.
One more.
Okay.
The classroom sizes and the way they're downscaled to keep distancing, is, is that going to result in any addition of staff? Because there's going to be more classrooms?
Well, we're trying not to have that happen, but again, we're working through all the various iterations of things. And what we're doing is, as you all know, because you've seen a lot of our staffing things through the budget process. And what we're doing is, as you all know, because you've seen a lot of our staffing things through the budget process, we have a lot of teachers who are reading teachers or other kinds of teachers. And so if they have the appropriate certification, we are putting them in classrooms. But what we're doing is we're partnering people. So say, for example, at one school, it might be that there's a special education teacher and a general education teacher who is certified at elementary. And maybe there's an assistant that also works with those two rooms. So there might be ten kids in one room because that room could hold ten and eight kids in the other room. But some of the kids in both rooms have IEPs. And so they need to be serviced by that special educator who is the teacher of record for those, for just those IEPs. Meanwhile, the classroom teacher really teaches all eighteen of the students, but they work in tandem going back and forth from one room to the next. And as Ken said before, creating those cohorts, what we're trying to do is we're calling it create the bubble. So you're in your little bubble, your little classroom bubble. Those are your three adults. Those are your eighteen kids. And so if someone were to have a problem, we can trace back where they've been and what they've been doing. Because at, at least at the beginning, they'll be eating lunch in the classrooms, eating their breakfast in the classroom, all those kinds of things. So that's really the plan. Or it might be a, another model that we've got going at another school is two classes with, I think there's fourteen kids in each and a middle class with fourteen. So it's forty-two students. The two classroom teachers have, are, are the teacher of record for twenty-one students. But there's a special educator there too that works between the three classes to service all those students' IEPs.
So there's always an adult with a group of kids, but there's some back and forth.
That's great. Thank you, Mike. Tracy?
Thanks. I've been following this and on most of your Zoom meetings and the work you've put into it. Clearly, there's been a lot of discussion and it's very evolving. So I've been extremely happy with the outcome because as we all know, people have very, very strong feelings about their children's education. And I think you've done the best to accommodate all, all people to the best that you can. So if somebody feels, doesn't feel safe, they can keep their child home. And if they feel strongly about getting them in the classroom, they can. And I, I just think that's the, a win-win for as many people as possible. One of the things I, I did like that I heard you say today is the classroom, classroom camera scenario. Because I think, and I know one of the things that wasn't mentioned here, but was mentioned in, in your previous school committee meetings, was that everybody kind of understood that the level of the remote learning at the end of the school year was maybe not up to the standard that, that we will see this year. I think that that was something that you stressed in one of your previous meetings and the public should know that, that, that level of, of education interaction is going to be elevated. But the nice thing about, about the classroom camera, I, I think obviously this is new to everybody and we have to be as flexible as possible, but when you have different teachers teaching at different levels, the good thing about the classroom camera is if you have to switch, you know, I mean, I think we're going to have to be flexible, right? You have somebody who's got something and next thing you know, the class is home for two weeks. And so if you have one person teaching one day and another, so I think that that brings everybody into the same person at the same level. Because otherwise you have a different pace perhaps or curriculum at home as you have there. So then when you switch, it makes it, it makes it very difficult. So I, I think that that's a great thing. You answered the lunch question. The teachers moving, interestingly enough, I've hosted several exchange students. And one of the most exciting things for these exchange students from three different countries that I've had that have all went to D Y said that that was the one thing that they were excited about is because they move. And in most countries, they don't move, the, the teachers move. So that's, it's interesting we got to that. When you talk about individual students that require the full-time learning, are those the IEP in 504 or ESL students as well? Or how do you, how do you prioritize who gets that full-time space at the high school?
I've seen a lot of metrics. We haven't really designed one yet, but in, so far, what we're concerned with most is students who are in highly specialized programs. So they rarely go in, out into the general population. Those would be the first priority. I've seen some other metrics from some other districts. We haven't started to use those yet. But the threshold I've seen is if seventy-five percent of your time, you're in what we call self-contained classroom, that would be the ideal candidate for full in-person every day. And that was really given to us honestly by the commissioner who said that we really had to program for those kids every day because, you know, they lose out the most. Having a student remote for some of that stuff just doesn't work. English learners also, we're looking for ways to include them every day. They are not necessarily in a separate classroom though every day. So we're still trying to work through the details on that. We haven't, it's not all completely figured out, but we are working on it.
Yeah, it's obviously difficult, but I think the English, as a second language learners are, tend to fall behind. We know through testing. So, you know, the more in-person that they can get, the better. What, what is your plan with the, the children that require the one-on-one aids? Will that continue?
Well, that's kind of a, an interesting topic. I think it depends, you know, again, and we're going to have to look, again, each of these have to be taken on a case-by-case basis. If you had a student who is a, a child that suddenly jumps up and runs out the door and runs out of the school and into the driveway, you probably want somebody that is connected to them. If they just have a little trouble like paying attention sometimes and staying on task, if you're in a class of eight or ten or twelve, maybe that's not so hard anymore. So we have a lot of, I'll call it new jobs for our assistants to do with things that we didn't really have to do before. For example, as you can imagine, up at the high school, we really have to be having someone who can monitor the restrooms. Because quite frankly, you can't have a whole gang of kids in one restroom. So there has to be social distancing marks on the floor where people have to stand and wait for their turn. But if you and I and Ken are all teachers in the same wing, I don't know that you've sent a kid down.
Right.
He did and I did. So, you know, those kinds of things, we, we need some bus monitors, as Ken mentioned earlier. So we're working with our assistance union to see what we can do to get those other kinds of jobs filled. In addition, in addition to our nurses, we need a medical assistant to staff the isolation medical waiting room. Thank you.
Do we know what the total cost of these additions are to the district at this point? Is, and is there anything that's not covered by some of the federal grants that you've already received?
So far, we haven't really added staff. It's a matter of repurposing. So we, I don't think we can really give you any kind of a figure yet.
Okay.
We're being cautious, as you might imagine, because we know the state's not even guaranteeing everybody's budgets for towns or schools to the end. So we're working very hard not to add anything that's not covered and still keep a bit of a cushion, if you will, a reserve internally. Because anything else, just, it would be hard to explain why that was a good idea for us, but.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that a lot of the parents haven't returned, but with having so many questions still out there, I think that you can understand that some people are, and that's why I think this conversation is really good, because I think the more you talk about it and people understand the depth of what you've looked into, the more comfortable they'll become. Where settling the union contract, I think, would be helpful for people to know. Where, do you have an estimated date? Is, I mean, because the clock is kind of ticking here.
Well, we have, we have set a timeline of September ninth to try to finish it up. We'll see.
That's unfortunate because I think it's, people can't plan if something happens. I know one of the things that Mike didn't say, but when he talked about Barnstable, that was one of the things with Barnstable is that they're, they're going to do full remote for, I think, two weeks from that September sixteenth date. So I think for parents to make a decision on what they're going to do, that doesn't leave them a whole lot of time to prepare. And so that's, that's unfortunate for them, but hopefully we'll get that settled. And, and you said, and I just want to make sure I understand, the buses, with what we have based on the surveys, you don't need additional buses or routes?
It's still right at the edge. My, my concern is, you know, three hundred more people say I need a bus ride. And so then we might have to adjust start times because you can't get all the students there. And again, that's the piece that's, I think this, that novelty alone for people is just one of the, they're not realizing the implication of that. Nothing looks undoable. The problem is if too many, if a large number of people now decide, yes, I am coming in, by the way, I am taking the bus, we'll probably have some different times in starting for some of the buildings because there's no way to get that many students. Bottom line, you know, twenty-three students, you run thirty buses, you have a limited capacity. Roughly, the high school's less of an issue because of the hybrid. You know, if you're doing a max of three hundred eighty a day, you don't need as many buses because not a lot of them ride. Most high school students would prefer not to. They'll get in. The middle and elementaries are a little bit different. But we'll have that wrapped up because either way, by about Thursday, we have to know so we can finalize plans. Or that's a, just a practical cutoff date. And we won't even get into, so in October, if everybody changes their mind, what does that look like?
Well, when you think about DCF and, and what you hear about the lack of reporting because children aren't in school, I think, I think that getting them back for their social, emotional wellbeing is, is really important. But I am concerned also with the cohort that they have to live within. It's, it's our new normal. And hopefully our new normal isn't like that for very long because some children are very social and they will, still won't be able to have that interaction. And I think, you know, my concern would be as far as education, you, you lose them in terms of their interest in, in keeping them coming, which you guys have done such a great job with for so long. So hopefully our new normal isn't very long. And I just want to say perhaps the town could find some space maybe for daycare for your, for your educators, if that was something. Because I have a couple of ideas. That's all. I was thinking, Dan's been trying to.
I'm working on the air conditioning.
Dan, Dan's been trying to repurpose some areas in LCM, so maybe, maybe that's an option. That's all. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Eric?
Thank you for coming in tonight. This is obviously a tremendous amount of work and I don't envy you at all. You know, there are obviously a million questions, you know, the answers to which would only serve to satisfy my own curiosity, so I won't bother you with them. But I do wish you the best of luck. This is a difficult situation. And I, I just, I fear the worst, you know. I, I fear, as I have my own son that I'm shipping to college tomorrow, I feel, I fear that you're going to get started and then you're going to suffer a setback and it's going to throw a wrench in everything. And I hope it does, I hope that doesn't happen. I hope that for everybody's sake. But I think that, I don't know if you have a contingency plan in case that happens, but I hope it doesn't. And I wish you the best of luck with all this because it's going to be a tremendous amount of work. So thank you very much.
Very good. I, I have nothing to add other than to say thank you. It's an enormous amount of work and we appreciate all your efforts.
If I could though, I don't want to leave with the impression all the cameras are eight hundred dollars, you know. We, we know you can get.
Don't worry.
Okay. Inexpensive cameras up top.
Trust us.
These are specialized. I apologize to Jeff in the visioning statement after that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for wiping down the mic too. That's very nice of you. Helps us move the meeting along. We might add that as a requirement for every presenter. Right. Like the gym, right? Whoever uses the equipment has to wipe it all down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Judgment zone in here.
Next item, DPW, proposed reorganization. Mr. Colby. You have two minutes.
He can do it.
Probably news to his ears.
The green light is flashing for some reason. I don't know what that means. Probably means we're getting another sea breeze coming any moment now.
It looks like it's steady now. How's that?
There you go.
Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. Unfortunately, we're in the situation where we're in a little bit of a team building environment here in DPW. We've had some key manager vacancies that have come up, some unexpected. But I like to take that opportunity to see what we can do better and how we can improve the team. One of the things I do is look at existing staff. How can we best use them? Those are all things that I like to focus on. Certainly this environment, I also want to take a look at cost savings as a way to, to accomplish that a little more efficient in what we do. Want to look towards the future with regards to wastewater, some other big projects we have and how can we best handle and manage some of those things. And so that's kind of the background in which this proposal to you comes. What I am recommending is that we have an assistant DPW director. The town of Yarmouth did have that not too long ago. The last assistant was Rob Angel. He supervised highway, building and grounds and waste management and did an excellent job in doing so. And so that's what I am proposing here. I've outlined in the memo that you have in your packet on what that looks like as far as savings. We do have some fairly senior incumbents that have either, like I said, retired or moved on or departed. And so there will be a cost savings in bringing someone new on in any case. But I also felt that looking at the team, there was an opportunity to repurpose some of the positions and some of the responsibilities people have. Like I said before, when you have a senior member of the team that leaves, you want to, you know, look at the team and see what might be within their scope and their responsibility and how we could repurpose some of those. What I'm not proposing is a staff reduction, just a responsibility improvements, if you will. And so that's what I'm proposing. Happy to answer any questions. I know this is relatively broad as far as requests. The specific being the assistant position, but how that plays out with regards to who applies and who might be interested. We'll say they'll have internal candidates for that position and some of the other repurposed positions that are outlined in the memo. And happy to answer any questions you might have in that regard.
Thank you. I'm going to start at the other end. Eric?
Well, I guess my first question is why we funded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of vacant salaries in 2021?
Well, I can say that one of them wasn't vacant until about two weeks ago. So we had to plan for that position and that's the salary of that position. And the other one, operation supervisor, wasn't vacant until about a week and a half ago and that individual took another position. So we had people in those positions when we went through that budget process and that's why that was funded that way.
Highway superintendent, we haven't been able to find a quality candidate at that position in quite some time, since the last superintendent retired.
The second paragraph of Dan's memo indicates that Rob supervised waste management, highway and building and grounds. What were the head positions in those various different areas? And will there be, will there be or are there similar positions? And, and those are what are going to be downgraded to result in the, what is it, a net sixteen thousand dollar savings? Is that right? So you're downgrading people in order to fit this model?
There is in the case of building and grounds, the opportunity to do that. When Rob was here, again, this was before my time, but when he was in that position, there were supervisors that were in charge of different functions. They just had different graded positions, if you will. I can use one example for the case of Dick Court. He was the facilities manager. That didn't, at that time, he didn't have responsibility for building and grounds. He just had the facilities. And so that is a model that we're looking to go back and have somebody just responsible for facilities. As I mentioned in the memo, that will allow that person a little more time to spend on town buildings, which is now that position oversees building and grounds and cemeteries and parks and beaches. So if we can focus one position more on the buildings, I think that's a identified need and that's what I've indicated in, in the memos. That's just one example of how we would repurpose a position in order to focus more specifically on a need of the organization.
Jeff, if you could just speak, bring the microphone closer to you. They're having trouble at home listening. Listen, I think you can just pull the whole thing up.
And I apologize, Jeff. I misread it. This is your memo to Dan, not Dan's memo to you.
Yes.
You know, this probably doesn't have anything to do with this, but since you and Robi are both here, I want to talk a little bit or ask you a question about the transfer station. You know, since that falls under the supervision or will fall under the supervision of this position that you're reinstating or creating, however you look at it. You know, we've had, I went to the dump yesterday and poor Robi was out there sweating in a mask, advising people that you were short-staffed. She was kind of trying to stuff trash in the overflowing bins. And, you know, we've had a couple of days this summer that transfer station was closed due to illness, people calling in sick. And yesterday was a bad situation at best. So, you know, I wonder, what's going on over there? You know, I think, Robi, when you walked by my truck, you indicated to me that there were two people licensed to drive the trucks that shuttle the bins and both had called out sick. And it doesn't seem right that a facility should be able to be crippled by two people calling in sick. So whereas this has happened in a couple of other instances, what's going on?
Well, I'll let Robi answer the details, but I will say that we are definitely challenged with regard to the number of staff we have within DPW, not just in waste management, but across all the divisions. So what I am proposing here is not to reduce staff and do so by not filling positions. I know that not filling positions is a budgetary savings, more significant than I've outlined here, but I'm not proposing that because we are very short-staffed across the board in every division. And I'll let Robi comment specifically on waste management.
So yesterday, the situation was that we did have an operator who came in late. He was at a doctor's appointment and we had an operator who went home sick at nine o'clock in the morning with a bad neck issue. It did back us up as terms of the cans. I am not aware that the disposal area has been closed at all. The scale has been closed, yes, because we had some technical issues and we also had some staffing issues as far as the scale is concerned. But the disposal area has not closed with the exception of holidays. And yes, you're absolutely right. It has been exceptionally busy. Our volumes are up exponentially. As you can imagine, people are home. They're not using disposal services at restaurants or at other facilities. They're coming to the dump and they're dropping it because they have a sticker. So our volumes are up. Our customer service is, in my mind, exceptional. As a matter of fact, we receive regular emails from people saying what a great team we have. Yesterday was an isolated incident, which although, yes, there have been a few scenarios where we've had lines. I'm not always out there, but yesterday because lunchtime happened, I covered for the gatehouse staff and yes, I was letting people know, please be patient with us. We did have somebody call in sick and everybody was all smiles. There was no problems. And yes, Jeff is absolutely right. It would be great if we had more help and fill the positions that we have, but I think we're doing a good job.
Okay. I just, I wanted to ask, I thought I had seen emails referencing closures in the past. Perhaps it was only to the scales and not to the transfer station? I don't remember, to be honest with you. I just thought that I would ask the question. So this doesn't, doesn't reduce staff, but it doesn't necessarily increase any efficiency either. It doesn't, it doesn't free other people up to perform other duties.
It will be an opportunity to look at the different positions, again, depending on who applies for the assistant, and maybe repurpose some of those supervisors to, you know, either limit their oversight or in the case, like I said, of the facilities superintendent, right now, that position oversees quite a large group. We have some very good responsible foremen and other supervisors in those divisions. So if we're able to repurpose a position that just focuses solely on facilities, there will be a higher level of service to facilities. So right now, we have two people that are strictly focused on facilities and then the supervisor, again, Dick Court's former position, which is building grounds and facilities. If we repurpose that position to be solely facilities, there's a three-person team dedicated to facilities, which is not the case as of currently. So it will give an opportunity to provide more focused attention in certain areas?
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Tracy?
You know, I'm having a hard time visualizing a chart, perhaps, of flow. Because when you look at it and you think about buildings and grounds and you're saying they're supervising beaches and things like that, we have other people who do beaches. We have several supervisors. We have a recreation director. We have an assistant recreation director. So I guess it's just me visually, perhaps having a personnel chart of how it might flow would be helpful. But I guess to Eric's point, looking at this, we're looking at the top and I'm not sure what the issue is with filling the positions if we have vacancies. But perhaps, you know, for, perhaps maybe we need to add more personnel at the landfill to, so that way when that kind of thing happens. And I know it's a, it could be a one-off, but they're always busy and short-staffed. I've been hearing that for a long time. So I just, I would hate to be looking at the top without looking at the bottom. You know what I mean? I feel like this is all key people that are all supervisors, but what about the people down here? And that's what I'm concerned about. So for me, I think if I had, if we had a flow chart to see how it would work and who was responsible, if we have, I just need to see it. I'm sorry. That's-
Sure. Well, I can describe it relatively briefly. Right now, DPW have five divisions. We have water, wastewater. We have building and grounds, which I'm proposing to downgrade that position slightly so we wouldn't have five very senior managers, if you will.
So let's just talk about those two right there. You have wastewater. We just hired a wastewater-
That's correct.
Supervisor, correct?
Used to be water superintendent. We added the responsibility-
So now we want somebody over, over that? Is that what this-
That position reports directly to me.
Okay. All right. So then the second one you just talked about was the building-
Second one is building and grounds.
And that's a, that's a, that would be a three-person team with how many supervisors?
Well, we have a park supervisor. We have a cemetery foreman. And what I'm proposing is rather than a building and grounds superintendent, have a facilities manager that would also be a supervisor as well, but at a lower grade.
Okay. So maybe if we could just see that and what, how the grades work? Because in my mind, I'm thinking, you know, we're having a high-level person to supervise two people. I just, perhaps it could be, fall under somebody else. I don't know. I just need to look at it. But I appreciate your wanting to streamline and have somebody. I know you have a lot on your plate, a lot, and you can't be everywhere and do everything. So having direct points of contact outside of you, I think, is very important. I think it would flow better for the work. But again, I'd like to see it before I make a decision.
Okay.
Mike?
I'm on the same wavelength with Eric and Tracy. I'm having a hard time envisioning where the real savings and efficiency is gonna be. And the proposed net savings is kind of thin, $16,000. That may or may not hold depending on who the candidates are and what you have to work out to get them to come to work for you. So, you know, I'd like more detail and I'd like to get a better understanding of how this reinstating this assistant's position is gonna do more than just reallocate responsibilities, how there's gonna be an efficiency that's realized because of that.
Anything else, Mike? Dan, is there anything that you want to add to this discussion?
I would just, a couple of things. I think we're having significant issues with recruitment of personnel and it's not just unique to Yarmouth. It's, we're in a very limited labor market. Some of these job titles are very specific in their skill sets and their professional licensure requirement. I know at Scale House, the staff there, we have a lot of wage pressure issues we're dealing with right now. Then these are odd times for sure and wage pressure is maybe artificially inflated by the situation that we're in now. That said, you would think there'd be like a plethora of people looking to apply for these jobs and that's not what we found at all. Highway superintendent's position, when we went out, I think we've gone out on two searches on that, have not yielded highly, what I'd call high caliber candidates for that job position. So on many fronts, I think what we're trying to do is take a look at the team we have now, match the skill sets that they have with the job opportunities that formerly were in, perhaps in their skill set and match them with that. And as a, for instance, like Dick Court, I think one of the most underappreciated aspects of the role that he did is everything buildings and grounds that needed to be purchased went through Dick. And so you took a great craftsman who took on more and more responsibilities, but he became, you know, significantly an administrative functional person because of the fact of all the contracts involved and all the rundowns of quotations that have to go down. And we have somebody filling the role now who is an exceptionally talented craftsman who's, I think, would tell you that his desire set is not to end up in the same line of work of procuring work and contracts and dealing with all sorts of stuff that goes on with contracting. And Dick was exceptional at that. So Jeff came to us with, you know, this is a model that we had in the past and based on, you know, the labor market being what it is and the challenges we've had and based on the skill set of the people that we have presently. Interestingly, we did have an individual request to remove themselves from a supervisory position because frankly, they didn't really, you know, for personal reasons that they just didn't want to be doing that anymore. So, you know, we're just trying to come up with a structure that gets, increasingly in these jobs, the administrative component is problematic. It's not public works like it used to be. There's prevailing wage charts that have to go with all this work and contracting and procurement and public works manages a lot of that activity. They do an exceptional job now. So we were just trying to come up with a better system to account for that in the, when we're presented with these openings that we've been presented with, unfortunately.
Mark, can I ask another question?
Sure. Go ahead, Eric.
You know, in the past with similar reorganizations, we have put some, you know, we have combined duties into new positions. You know, is there an opportunity to put the responsibilities of some of these other positions, building and ground superintendent, highway superintendent, operations supervisor, into the Assistant DPW Director's scope of responsibility? I mean, can we, or are these specific skill sets that require somebody with a knowledge so specific that we have to hire a separate position?
Combine is exactly what I'm talking about here. I do have to be careful in how we discuss that in open session here. I've already been, I've already been hearing from the union about some of this, so I have to be careful in how I discuss that. Again, I'm not talking about any kind of reduction in the numbers, but certainly combining responsibilities is exactly what I'm talking about here. The ability to do that at the higher level with some of the managers will free up some ability to bring on or have people focus on lower-level responsibilities. That's probably as specific as I can get right at this moment.
I guess I'm questioning whether the net savings will really be $16,000 or whether it could be more.
It could be more.
Okay. All right, I'll leave it at that.
Anybody else? So I think where we're standing right now is I think the board is looking for some more information. My hope is that you have an idea of what additional information the board's looking for. So Jeff, if you have any more questions of us in terms of the kind of information you think you might need, now's the time. Do you think you've got a pretty good idea of what we're gonna-
Got a good idea with regard to flow chart responsibilities. Not, again, not all of it can be telegraphed out to the lowest detail because I don't know who's gonna apply for this one key position. This one key position is kind of the pyramid, if you will, that will affect other positions and how they could be reorganized and adjusted. So it's gonna be difficult to telegraph all of that, but I can certainly provide a better flow chart.
Okay.
When you do that, Jeff, could you, could you please also indicate, you know, which positions are vacant? And, you know, at a higher level, what other savings might be had by combining the duties of some of these other vacant positions into the duties of the Assistant DPW Director? I mean, I don't know, are you allowed as part of negotiations? Are you allowed to elaborate that on that or?
I think, I know what you're looking for, but I think some of that's going to be difficult because any time a position is changed, that needs to be bargained. And so I know what you're looking for. I'm just not sure if I can, at this kind of high level, telegraph all of that.
So to follow up on that, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the position description as presented had been previously gone through that process and through Personnel Board. So we haven't had to do any alterations. We're just literally kind of setting the clock back.
Got it.
So that was my question about the levels and grades. That's already been established with that, with that potential job description.
Correct. We already have an Assistant DPW Director job description and grade associated with that. That's ready to go. It just hasn't been funded or filled previously, well, since 2015.
Very good. Okay, so we're going to revisit this at a future meeting once the rest of the board gets some additional information. So Jeff, thanks for the presentation. Next item on the agenda, the Yarmouth Vision Plan Update.
Joanne Crowley and Kathy Williams will take the meeting from here on that particular topic. There should be a memo from Kathy and the planning board in your packet.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board's elected. You have a new briefing packet, a revised plan for the visioning process. The last time we spoke with you was in January. And at that time, we mentioned that the, you know, this is part of our local comprehensive plan. And this is part of an important process that is, you know, regulated and administered by the Cape Cod Commission. So we have some important steps to follow in terms of having this plan reviewed and accepted by them. They've seen our visioning plan, the original one and the revised one. And they've said, yep, looks okay. Looks like you're covering all your bases. Just want to bring it back one step as to, you know, what a, what a vision statement is all about. Remember, a forceful and meaningful vision statement for the town of Yarmouth will express our shared values as a community, you know, identify what's important, what needs improvement and what we want to preserve and we want to protect. It's that simple. But capturing the voices of the many in the town of Yarmouth is our challenge. And so we wanted to reflect as many of those voices as possible. So we have for you tonight, which is part of your package, a fairly broad public engagement plan. That's one thing we want to talk about tonight that you have not seen. Our first meeting with you last year had a broad overview and a schedule. The overview really hasn't changed that much. There's one piece of it, which is the second thing I want to talk to you about tonight, has changed a little bit. And the schedule, obviously, has changed. We had some interruptions this spring and our schedule has been pushed out by six months or so, Kathy, I would say. So tonight, so our purpose in just touching base with you tonight is twofold. One, to share with you our detailed public engagement plan. And there's a redlined version which shows you where we were back in February and where we think we need to be today that we'd like to go forward with, with your concurrence. And then advise you about one change in that plan that is directly as a result of COVID-19 and social distancing and the like. But first, the public participation plan. As I mentioned, we want to gather as much information from as many residents and stakeholders as possible. And our public engagement plan includes a variety of opportunities and methods for public participation, including workshops, which I'm gonna touch base, touch on tonight, and online and hard copy surveys. So those are the two ways we want to capture the opinions of our- So those are the two ways we want to capture the opinions of our residents and our stakeholders. Our communication campaign will include a very comprehensive plan of messaging and outreach through all possible media outlets, electronic, paper, and otherwise, town committees, communities, civic organizations, business associations, neighborhood groups, and our schools. And as noted on the schedule, this public participation plan runs the full length of the visioning process. So we are in that plan from the beginning to the end. The public engagement plan is not a step that we end and then we continue with something else. It covers the entire visioning plan process. The second thing we wanted to touch base on tonight was one small change to that, which is we can't meet in community workshops. We can't do face-to-face. So we are going to, using a Zoom platform, engage the public in a public participation, visioning workshops electronically, digitally. We think we can do this. We think the public is far more adept at this than we ever thought they could be. I know, I'll speak for myself. I've become a Zoomer, much to my surprise. And it seems to work. You know, I've been pleased with my infancy with it, but somehow we get through it, and I'm confident with Kathy and other members of the planning board, who I might add, the planning board, I think, is well-equipped to handle their job as part of these workshops. I mean, before, we were going to be in-person at these workshops. We were going to be the facilitators to try to eke out and get the best information we can. Well, now we're going to be, you know, Zoom moderators. And I think the planning board, as it's constructed, is well-equipped to do that and is more than willing to engage. So we've rebooted that workshop piece so that it will be a Zoom format. We'll have participant registration, like any kind of webinar or Zoom meeting that you've participated in, including Board of Selectmen meetings. You'll have to register as a participant. You'll have to be invited. We'll have to know a little bit about you. We're going to send you pre-meeting instructions as to how this whole thing works, along with data to equip you with some pre-knowledge about stuff about Yarmouth that you might not know. People might come to these workshops and be unknowing about, well, where are our beaches? How many parks do we have? Do we have pickleball courts? Do, you know, what is? So the idea is to kind of get them as much information as possible before these workshops. And then there's meeting management, which will be with our consultant and Kathy and her staff and all members of the planning board. We will be the meeting managers, where we will try to elicit all the best and timely comments we can from our residents and stakeholders. We expect that the very first workshop will be held in November, December time period. And we'd like to come back and see you or send you a note to let you know how it goes and if we need to make any adjustments to our view of how we might accommodate this change in engaging the public. So we'd like to, you know, just touch base with you back towards the end of the year after we've kind of gone through one of these and see how we do. So those are the two real purposes of us briefing you tonight is, one, bringing you up to date on where we are with the public engagement plan. It's pretty comprehensive. Kathy and her staff have done an incredible job. And then to get your okay about this switch from in-person, obviously we can't do that, to a Zoom platform to engage the public in face-to-face, if you will, communication through the rest of the plan. So we thank you for giving us this opportunity to come before you. The planning board's all on board with this, and we're anxious to get going. This is one step in an important process, and it's a lengthy step. A lot of pre-work has been done by Kathy and her staff, but this step takes time because it is sequential. The engagement of the public has to, and the vetting of the public and the vetting through you and the vetting through the board is a time-consuming process, so we want to get going. So that's where we are.
Great. Kathy to Jeff.
Any comments or questions or concerns?
Okay, you ready for Q and A? You ready for, okay. All right, Mike. You only have a minute, Mike, since you used up in the last.
I have Jack.
Go ahead.
Things have changed, obviously, with coronavirus, and I guess more and more people are getting used to Zoom communications. We conducted many selectmen's meetings using Zoom. We didn't get the level of public input, I don't think, that we would get in a live meeting, but it was increasing from time to time before we came back here. Obviously, live sessions would be better, would be preferred. The big challenge, I think, here is, first of all, getting, A, the participants, but B, more specifically, the cross-section of participants because a lot of older people aren't as savvy with computers and virtual information sharing as younger and middle-aged people are. And if you want to get, you know, the full community vision, the full community input, I think that's a group you're going to have to do a little bit of thinking about and a little bit of working with to try to get them. Now, you know, we make generalizations, but there are older people who are technologically educated. And the question and the challenge, I guess, would be finding those people. It would be much better to enlist them than try to teach others how to get on the communication platform. But other than that, assuming we can do that, I think it's a very good idea. I think the process should be started. It's going to be time-consuming. And one question that I had is, not to participate, but might, if a selectman desires to come in just to monitor, to see what's going on, to see, you know, who's involved and what the level of exchange is and what the level of excitement might be or interest levels, you know, without even necessarily identifying themselves, but just being in there to watch.
We think that would be a good, I think, that would be great. That would be great. In answer to your question, the in-person workshops, now virtual workshops, we're just one way we're going to try to, we will engage with the public. We know and are very aware of the demographics of the town. And paper surveys are going to be a critical piece of data gathering for us, and it's part of the plan. And so there'll be all sorts of places and outlets where we will plan to make sure if and when the senior center opens or senior center newsletter goes out, we will find a way to make sure that those members of our community who do not have the internet, and there are surprisingly quite a few. I, in one of my other lives, I happened to be a shine counselor for Medicare, and I'll frequently ask my clients, you know, did you sign up on Medicare.gov? So everything is there and we can get you a new Part D plan and we'll get you on your drug?
What's that?
Nothing. I'll have to ask my son to, you know, that. So we're fully aware of that, and Kathy's made accommodations to make sure that that part of the community is not left out at all. So we feel pretty confident we're going to have a broad demographic, and we're going to check to make sure that we do as we go through this. If we're missing some places, we'll go revisit. If it looks like we're getting demographics that are skewed, we'll revisit.
I'm happy to hear that response, that there will be other venues for those people to.
Yeah, the workshops is just really just a little piece. There's going to be online surveys for people who don't even want to go to attend the workshop, so.
Great, thanks. Tracy?
I think the last time the senior services was here, they talked about a dispatching of iPads or tablets to a lot of their seniors.
They have a program in place. I think the last time I checked, the census number was like twenty-five or thirty, thereabouts. The need is high, but there's also training and acceptance of the tool, you know? So we could probably, over time, do better there, but.
Is there a way that people can donate? If somebody wanted to donate a tablet or sponsor somebody with a tablet for access, is there a way for?
Yeah, I think one of the challenges to that is making sure that you line up whatever talent that we have that does the training, that it's compatible with that. So, but we're certainly looking for, and I know the age-friendly group is looking for further opportunity to continue moving in that direction. But the internet connectivity is a challenge. I fielded a question yesterday from somebody newly retired in town, and they were all upset that they had to pay seventy-nine dollars to get a Comcast connection, and it's horrible. And he said, isn't there any other options? I said, well, I suppose you could call Verizon and get a DSL connection. He goes, well, that's like twenty years ago. I go, I know, but that's what's available to you, you know? So I think what ends up happening when people move into town, when they do want to have a robust internet connection, they're having some challenges with that. And the second thing is there's a lot of folks that haven't quite discovered the internet yet.
Exactly.
One of the things, I think everything you've written on here in terms of doing it remotely is great. One of the things I did see, though, is dispersment of information in the water bills. I think we have to be cognizant of the Comquid folks that don't get our water bills. So if you disperse anything through that venue, we need to make sure we reach them.
Sixty-one.
I think there's like sixty-one houses. We could work through that with the Barnstable Fire District on that potentially.
The water bill already went out. We're talking about sixty-one.
Yeah, do a mailing. We could do that.
Yeah, but just so you know, if you're thinking everybody's getting it, that's something that we've heard before. So, so in terms of, well, we talked about doing hybrids here too of part Zoom, part real-life meeting. Any of your meetings, though, would be taped and be able to be replayed for people to watch the information?
It gets a little bit trickier when you're talking about going into the different breakout rooms. The whole idea with the in-person workshops was that we'd come, we'd have a very, very brief presentation on the purpose of visioning, kind of what we were hoping to get out of it. And then everyone would break out into different groups of six to eight people, which would have a facilitator, which would be the planning board member. What we were trying to do is replicate something similar to that in the Zoom, where you can have breakout rooms and the planning board members would still be the facilitators. Unfortunately, I don't think that when you're recording a Zoom, you're just getting the host who's just standing there saying, everyone's in their breakout room. I don't know whether you can record within each breakout room. It becomes a little bit more difficult. That's something I'd need to look into.
Yeah, I'd be interested in how that works for the public record in a public meeting. I know if it's only one member of the planning board, there's no deliberation, so it's probably fine. But it would, I mean, a public meeting should be able to be.
Well, so the beauty of Zoom, if we use that, it gets recorded and it can be played back on the recording on our YouTube station.
We'd probably have to have each facilitator as a host recording each breakout room.
Okay.
You'd have multiple invites have to go out.
Okay. I'm just saying the video would be not typical of what you would see.
So in terms of the agenda, though, each one of your meetings will have a specific goal and task. So it's not going to be just like, you're going to have topics that you're going to discuss or it's just going to be open. So what would your breakout rooms be? Just the information gathering of those people in connection with the ones that you're meeting with?
I think it's going to be very similar to what we're doing with the survey because we're going to start with asking people, what's the important things that we have in Yarmouth? What are the things that you really like to see? And help identify those special things in Yarmouth that we want to preserve, like Joanne was talking about. And then there's some particular questions, like what's your favorite area of town? Where do you bring your guests? That type of thing to get people thinking about, what's the thing that you like the most about Yarmouth? And everyone would go and they'd have a little time period where they would have to be writing that information down. Unfortunately, the one thing that does get changed with the Zoom is instead of handing it all in at the live, people are going to have to somehow get their information to us by mailing it, dropping it, sending it to our email so that we get that information. And then each breakout group would be asking the same questions. So people would be consistently getting the same thing. Again, it would be similar questions with regard to the survey. So we're asking the same questions of everyone. You'd come back to the main group. We'd have the different breakout groups. We'd do a brief presentation of the things, the three major things that kept coming up in their particular workout session. Then you'd go into the next breakout room where you would be talking about, what are the weaknesses or the challenges that you see in Yarmouth? What's kind of holding us back? And people would, again, have those types of conversations back and forth. And we would do that for different opportunities, and then we'd do that for the threats. It's exactly a SWOT analysis.
All right.
And it's very scripted so that I'm in one breakout room and Tom Barron is in another breakout room. We are following the same script of questions and follow-throughs.
Okay, good.
We're trying to keep the data collection somewhat consistent.
That would be good. So have you already, I see on the timeline here about choosing a consultant. Has a consultant already been chosen?
Yes, we have an on-call list, and one of the on-call is Horsley Witten, who assisted the planning board previously with regard to the VCOD bylaw. And we have gotten a scope from them, and we were going to execute it. But then we kind of had a little bit of a budget snafu. We weren't sure if that money was going to be taken and needed for something else. But now that we know that we're going to be able to use it, and if you guys are happy with this plan, we will have him modify his scope a little bit. He'll still be provided, they'd still be providing the same thing. They'd be helping us taking a look at our format, the script that Joanne was talking about with regard to our first survey, helping us develop that online survey or the written survey, helping us train the facilitators, which is the planning board, on the different ways of doing the workshop and also the whole remote participation aspect of it. And then the biggest thing that they would be doing is helping us collect all of this data and all of this information that we're getting and trying to compile it into some type of categories or some type of reasonable coalescence of what was really important to the town and generalizing that into different categories.
And what's the commission doing to help?
The commission is, we have not asked them at this particular time to do anything. They have reviewed the proposal and have expressed.
They're not facilitating. They don't facilitate.
No, they're not.
In fact, the focus of the commission these days, they seem to have more lawyers than they have planners.
Yeah.
Oops, did I let that out? I'm sorry.
Well, I didn't hear you.
So, but other towns have gone through this process and have that literature already, correct? Is it not something we can, we're able to utilize or is it specific to us?
What do you mean by literature?
The general framework.
Oh, I think the framework is going to come out of what the input is from our public, which will be different. I know when Brewster went through, one of the things that they came up with that surprised them was how important environmental resource protection was to them. I think it was a little bit different. They also were very interested in a community center. You know, we will hopefully get what's important to Yarmouth and then try and come up with different categories. I think you'll find that the RPP, the Regional Policy Plan, already has goals and categories. And sometimes we'll see, well, where can that fit in with that type, that level of the RPP? And are those goals important to Yarmouth? But what ultimately will be done with all of this information from visioning is that we move on to the different sections, the very specific topics of the LCP and start identifying more specific goals and implementation plans that'll get us to where we want to be.
Okay, and in terms of the comments that were made by the Finance Committee earlier about some of the financial challenges or potentials or what's important to them, will that be something that we'll be able to, kind of, we'll be able to be massaged out of this in some way that will help? Or is it two different topics?
I think, I'll let Joanne speak, but first, I think there's slightly two different topics. I mean, we're talking about the ten-thousand level, aerial view. And to get down into something specific where you're going to say, I find the library project to be more important than the fire station. For someone to really make that determination, they're going to need to know a lot of information about those projects. Why do we need a new library? What's wrong with our existing ones? How is this going to take to fix up those? What resources are we going to get with a new library? They're going to want to know all of that. Like whenever we try to move a project forward, we have to have that very specific project-related public push and vetting of that and getting all of that information out to the public. So that might be a little bit hard, but you might get people saying, you know, libraries are very important to me. You know, I appreciate the services that are provided at our senior center. We'd like to see that continuing and moving on. We find that is a strong benefit to us.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. Eric?
When I think of Zoom, I still think of the show in the early seventies that was on with the Electric Company and Sesame Street.
There you go, there you go. Okay, well, thank you for that comment, Eric.
That really is my only comment. No, I'm just looking at all these edits that you've had to made. And, you know, we see so much, you know, the school before you, all this work that's having to be done as a result of, you know, what's happening in our society these days. And it's unfortunate, and, you know, I agree with Mike or part of what he said. You know, it's hard enough to get people to attend these things in person. And getting them to do it online. And I know that when we were meeting online, you know, we had. know, we have a much more free-flowing conversation here than we ever did online. And I just don't think that that, um, you know, you're obviously going to have your challenges in a, in a, in a virtual, um, setting. So, you know, I appreciate your enthusiasm and, uh, I wish you the best of luck and I'm looking forward to seeing the results. Thank you.
That's great. That's great. Yeah, I can recall when, um, in Brewster, when that community went through the process. No, I know. Trust me. Um, I, I, I had our planner, when, when I was in Brewster, I had the planner there meet with our staff, our staff comparing notes with the, with the Brewster folks and meeting with some of the people. They're very active and organizing and managing, uh, the visioning process in Brewster. I think one of the things that surprised, uh, the community as well as the officials in the town was how strongly residents felt about groundwater protection, environmental protection, national resources management. Uh, those priorities really sort of went right to the top. And, uh, this community center project, which had been talked about, but it emerged as a real priority. And what I thought was great is that we had that information. When I was in the administrator's office, we adopted goals of the board based on the things that the community expressed to us. And so it made for a much more cohesive relationship between the community and the elected officials. I think that's my hope in terms of what we can accomplish here, is that at the end of the day, when the process is done, that we as a board will have something in front of us that is truly a reflection of the vision and the desires and the dreams and the aspirations of the people here in this community. Um, because, you know, we, we, we struggle on our own, we try on our own as best we can to try to get a sense of what people are thinking and what they want. But to have a process like this in a very, very difficult climate, um, obviously, it's not easy to do this. You, you're obviously well aware of the challenges, but to be able at the end of the day to come up with something that sort of meets this, this goal is remarkable. Uh, it's, it's, it's certainly overdue. And I commend you for all the effort, all the time and all the energy that you're putting into it, um, particularly you, Madam Chair. And, uh, like Eric said, I, I wish you nothing but the best. And I don't think you should be shy at, at all about coming back if you think there's something that you need our help or input on or support on. Um, but I think it's safe to say, I don't know if you need a vote, but I think it's safe to say we're very excited and very supportive.
And I will do it.
Yeah, I think you're getting that tonight. You're getting a, a lot of enthusiastic support tonight. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the 2020 alcohol licenses proposed fees. Uh, Dan, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There was, um, a memo that we became aware of that was circulated amongst, uh, licensing clerks, departments across the Commonwealth. And the one specifically related to Barnstable. And Barnstable developed a policy for, uh, assisting, uh, licensed establishments during this, uh, COVID-19 economic, uh, challenge that they've had. So we figured that, um, it made sense based on the board's past position on trying to be helpful to the business community that we'd bring this, uh, in the Barnstable form to you for consideration for further guidance as to whether or not you would like us to draft some other language for you to consider prior to setting the, uh, the licensing activity for next year in place, which begins, uh, very shortly.
Okay. Um, very good. Has, has the board had a chance to go through this and digest it? Um...
I, I...
Eric?
I know that deliveries became very popular, alcohol delivery. Were, were liquor stores other than those who could do deliveries, were, were they closed?
My understanding, liquor stores never were closed.
They were open. In fact, a lot of them, their business increased.
Uh, I don't know one that didn't. So I'm curious as to why we're offering a reduction in the fees when my son worked for a local liquor store and their sales were up fifty percent over the same per, time period last year.
Well, the section, the section twelve licenses are pouring licenses.
Oh.
The section fifteens, uh, are the package store. You see in paragraph two, it says this credit does not apply to section fifteen licensees as they were allowed as essential operations and allowed to be fully open in 2020. So, um, this is really the way I read it to give some relief to the establishments that had the pouring licenses and basically were out of business for a portion of the year.
Okay. I take that. I didn't differentiate between...
That's okay, but that's how they, that's the parlance. You see Phil. Phil all the time talks about the fourteens and the fifteens and the twelves and, well, that's what they are.
Okay. My mistake.
So does twelve include restaurants that have?
Yeah.
So some of them are...
Bars, restaurants.
Well, bars are completely, anybody who just serves alcohol, they're...
But even restaurants, I think they got their permission to serve alcohol on a, a takeout basis late in the game. I don't think...
That was relatively recent. You're correct.
To do that right off the bat.
No, and they're, so they have...
Not only that, I don't know how many people really would get a mixed drink at bar prices to go when they could go down the street to the, you know, local liquor store and get a whole bottle for...
So how many facilities are...
We don't have a, an account for you, but we can certainly, if you decide to go, this is something you'd like administration, go down that road, we'll generate that. The other thing I'm mindful of is with, uh, the colder weather coming, the outdoor dining opportunity, uh, gets either way more expensive or non-existent. And the governor's order to allow for outdoor dining expires at the end of November anyhow. So it's likely those places that, uh, are, could be affected by this, when they have to go indoors. There, as you know, if you've been to some of the places that have made modification indoors, their total seating capacity is a bit different now under that condition. And that being said, I, I do think that, I don't know how long this thing's going to stay with us, but there'll probably be, uh, a movement to, uh, retain that outdoor seating activity through next year. I, I just don't see how they can recoup the business that they've lost from the complete shutdown, the limited action that went on this fall and then, you know, go, or the summer and then going into the fall, you know, we'll be out of the outdoor dining business pretty quick. So it's, uh, it's something. It's not, you know, I think we, we discussed it briefly with Linda Hill. It's not a lot of money on our end of it, but it certainly is, uh, something. We don't have a lot of, uh, tools at our disposal to help the business community, but certainly, um, I think it does, uh, it, that, it, we'll, we'll do the calculation on it as to what it could be based on some guidance, if that's something you'd like us to do.
I think, I think section, uh, if I could, Mr. Chairman, section three is important too, because typically if you don't renew your license in time, it expires and you have to apply for a new license.
That's correct.
And this provides that people who weren't able, maybe they just couldn't get enough, uh, tables, uh, at their establishment to make it worth their while opening, uh, up, um, they can hold their licenses as inactive. So, so when this, when they open, uh, whether it be in 2020 or 2021, they won't have to get their license reinstated. They can just pay, you know, either the whole fee or a portion of the fee depending on when they open. So I think, I think it's important that, that they get that relief as well.
Okay, Mike, I'm going to go back to Tracy. Tracy, you had a question?
No, I just, I just want to make sure regardless of what we do, that, well, the suspension, I'm not, I'm not sure how that elapsed and the license will, uh, will or would affect any type of insurance. But I think that we would want to make sure that they kept their license and their current insurance with the town. So I wouldn't, I would, I would hope that we would do something that would...
No, we'd have to, we'd do that. We'd have to make sure that the insurance is in full force and effect.
And I think, you know, it's hard because some people are affected way more than others in terms of fairness and, and how this policy, and I'm not sure how we could dictate that. Because there's some businesses that still can't open at all, and there are some that are making money and you're given the same, I guess, benefit to, to both, both licenses, which, so, so I think we should look at a bar or anybody who's still not open and make sure that we accommodate them to the full extent or as much as we can, as opposed to some, which, you know, obviously I think everybody's struggling, but...
We have some time on this. I think, uh, we know it's early November.
Okay. So let me just sort of pose this to the board, um, that this is a direction that the board would like to pursue. Um, it needs some work. Um, I think Tracy's points, I think everyone would agree with, that if there's some, a business that's been open, that they don't necessarily, or they're not necessarily entitled to some relief. Um, is that sufficient enough direction, Dan? I think that's, is that a correct sentiment? Eric?
My suggestion is perhaps rather than a flat one quarter, is that what this is?
I believe so.
Well, this is, yeah, this is what Barnstable's going.
Could we prorate it for the, for the number of months in 2020 that the facility was able to be open and credit that amount towards the twenty-one fees?
I, I would, um, we'll have to, I, I'll certainly try to run that by town council. My concern would be that under the law, you'd probably have to have a system where you treat everybody the same, but we'll double check on that. It's a good idea. Yep.
That sounds good. Okay. So there's, there's your direction, Dan. We're all comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay, that's good. I'm going to ask the people that came in late to sign in, uh, this form here up at the table. You'll see a sign-in sheet. We need to have accurate records of everybody who's been in this room. That includes folks that have come in in the back. So once, and we'll, we'll have to do this in a socially distanced way. So once one person comes up and signs, then another person, and we'll just continue this. In the meantime, we're just going to continue with our meeting. Um, the next item on the agenda is Fall Town Meeting, proposed date, November seventeenth.
So in your packet, um, there is a, uh, proposed article chart that I generated. Um, it's by no means, uh, exhaustive or inclusive of what the final might be. It's just a starting point for what we believe is on the radar screen right now. Uh, obviously there's the three petitioned articles that were withdrawn from, uh, the citizens petitions from the spring. So those have been added back on. And, uh, there is potentially, I believe, up to three CPA-related articles that, uh, uh, could have some adjustment. And then I've also added the wastewater articles, uh, to get that process started. Uh, I also left the agreement article on there for DHY, uh, although I don't think it's going to be in a form to be voted. And I think that's going to be the sentiment of the towns to not do that till the spring. Um, and then, uh, some capital, depending upon what the local receipts look like. We may decide, we'll present to you, uh, uh, capital items for reconsideration to be potentially added back into the budget. We'd have to make some adjustments to what we did in the spring, but all of that would be, uh, conditioned on the economy improving to some degree. So, um, there may be an additional one on golf-related fees. Um, I just haven't had a chance to, uh, completely get my hands around that topic.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, but Scott Gilmore had indicated that there could be a need for that, so...
Okay. Yes.
Dan, is there any indication of how our rooms and meals taxes are looking?
Well, you know, anecdotally, there's a lot of commentary that we hear. And I just took a call today that it indicated that September's bookings were, uh, looked pretty good, but we're not going to know until the state turns over the, the revenue receipts to us, uh, later in the fall. So the part of the challenge with this is preemptively, you know, you'd have to set and approve the article, but the data that we need to make those decisions comes after that fact. So, you know, it's, you know, you really can't get ready for the town meeting without the, you know, knowing for sure, but to be preemptive. If it is good story, and you know, like I said, up and down the cape, what we're hearing is people are making plans to stay longer through the shoulder season, which is going to translate, I think, to more sales all the way around the board. So that becomes more robust. It's, uh, it end up, it might end up being okay, so...
I think that you're going to see that with schools being delayed.
Yep.
Two, three, four weeks, kids not going back till October first.
Right.
Why wouldn't people stay?
That's right. They've learned how to work from here now.
Exactly.
So it's kind of wait and see, but we'll, uh, we'll load the, the warrant, uh, with presumed articles to give you the maximum amount of flexibility as possible.
Okay. Did you have any questions, Tracy?
No, I, I'm glad that we're going to do the wastewater infrastructure fund and the CPA exemption and get that rolling, because regardless of whether we do DHY or not, we need to start the funding stream.
Exactly. Got it?
I think so.
Okay. Mike, anything?
Okay.
Okay, very good. Do you need anything from us, Dan?
Well, not on that. I just, like I said, I just was bringing you up to date.
I appreciate it.
Very shortly though, I'll be bringing you a more formal one to take some votes on, so...
Okay.
And what do we say, November seventeenth?
Yep.
Yeah, presently that's, that falls after the presidential and before, uh, Thanksgiving. So it's like the last possibility.
Now, do any of these have to go, would the, would the whiff have to go to a ballot?
It does, and we can hit that in spring town, uh, town election.
So that won't be till May, the next year?
Yeah, you need thirty-five days, uh, between town meeting and election anyway. So there's no way we could time it for the spring anyhow. So, um, so this works out the best possible. And it gives you an opportunity to work on the ballot question.
Very good. Okay, the next item. Board and committee actions. Um, so with respect to committee actions, we have, uh, I'd like a motion to accept the resignation of Susan Britta with appreciation.
From whom?
Uh, from the Rec Commission. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is, um, uh, I'm looking for a motion to, uh, approve the appointment of Chris Harts Grove as a regular member to the Recreation Commission for a three-year term, which will run through July twenty twenty-three. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Upcoming agenda review. Uh, Dan, is there anything that you would like to sort of highlight here or showcase for us?
So, uh, of course, the election's coming up, uh, September first, uh, so that'll be next week. And then, uh, tax classification hearing to set the tax rate. We need to get that done before, uh, we can finish the books and, uh, get free cash and, uh, our, um, accounts, uh, certified by the state. So that's, uh, going to be in position then. Um, the show cause hearing for, uh, the Loft Restaurant, they've been notified about the complaints associated with that. Um...
What triggers the show cause? Just a complaint?
It's, no, it's, uh, communication we have with the chairman of licensing and, uh, and, and, and say, is this something? Yeah. I didn't want to speak for you, Mr. Stone, but...
Well, it's okay. Oh, I mean, we get a lot of complaints about a license and we don't know, you know, who's, who's telling what, so we have a hearing. They can come in and whoever else wants to come in and tell us what the issues are. I know last year we had an informal hearing. There was concerns then, so we did tell the people at that time that if they had any other, um, if they had any future problems, they could address us, they could come in. So this is their opportunity to do that.
Also, um, somewhere I probably by September twenty-ninth, uh, there'll be, um, the financial policy directive from the board will need to be, uh, voted on. And that's why we started the process tonight with the, uh, Finance Committee, so that we can get the directions out to the, the departments in October. Um, I don't necessarily, there is going to be some further, uh, town department reorganizations in front of you. Whether they go off on the fifteenth, I, I'm not sure. I need to get the ATA position in place before we, um, ask you for some consideration on some reorganization activity. Um... Okay. I do know that, uh, and Mr. Chairman, uh, you were on the call with me about, um, having the three boards of the towns of Dennis, Harwich and Yarmouth come together at some future date as it relates to, uh, set the, the, if you will, where we're at with the present state of the, uh, agreement and reconfirm a commitment to go down that road with a Springtown meeting vote. So there's no, no date set for that. And certainly, uh, the latest, uh, edits to the DHY agreement were asked of by Harwich, and we're waiting to hear their, whether they approve on the requested edits. And once we get that information, then, uh, we'll present it back to you as the latest. It, it's more, not really over on Saturday. That's, uh, that looks to be what's in front of us, uh, as I know things right now.
And one of the suggestions I'd like to make, um, is that as we take up the whole question of budget policy or fiscal policy, that it would be helpful actually to have the financial update actually precede that discussion. You know, I, I, I'm a little uncomfortable taking up on the twenty-ninth, the discussion of policy and then following the updated on finances. I think we should...
Yeah, I, I think if I...
Maybe even together. I got, I don't know how other board members feel, but I, I would like to know where we are financially.
That was, uh, that'll be our closeout on the past fiscal year, the last quarter. Some, sometime around that time, the first quarter results should be in. We have some, uh, internal work that we have to get through. We have some internal work that we have to get through. I'm also been reaching out to the commission to see if there's any assistance that they can render into that particular topic. It's a bit of a, to do this properly, it's a bit of a logistical effort for us. So, I, I'm trying to round up all the potential help that we can get before we go down this road and also seeing if other towns on the Cape are going down this road so that we can try to have some economy of scale. But we're, we're mindful of it and we're, you know, we'll bring something to the table shortly.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, I think we should add that on the, that little box there that we have, that can... Anybody else? Anybody else, okay. Next item, individual items. Eric? Tracy? I don't know anyone either, so this is one of the next items, Town Administrator Item.
Yes, if I could, Mr. Chairman, have a motion to accept the consent...
Do I have, do I have a motion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It carries the requisite majority. Okay. And the next item on the Town Administrator?
Yep.
I'm tapped.
Yeah, so I had a meeting, conference call the other day with our partners in cable negotiations, the retained attorney that we have is a gentleman by the name of Bill Solomon and Terry Duainis from the Cape Cod Media Center. And we're getting close, we're in a six-month window now where the state has notified that we need to try to work towards finalizing the contract. We are working with DY schools and also with Terry to come up with the inappropriate capital investment calculation so that we get the ask for all the needs that we need to meet with that. We're close. There is a new caveat to these negotiations this year in that a ruling recently by the FCC indicates that cable operators are allowed to charge franchisees the, what I would call the maintenance and carrying costs associated with, with hosting the PEG programming, Public Educational Government TV Programming. So, you know, we're in a scenario where depending upon who wins the November election, potentially, if it goes to the Democratic side, the FCC reverts back to its original position where there is no charge available to cable operators. So, they can't charge us for that service that they're supposed to have provided for us. So, we're, the sentiment has been with the many recent settlements of these contracts is to lock into an agreement because there, if it goes the other way against us, then we could have a real problem on our hands. So, there's, I'll probably bring the attorney in to discuss where we go before we do anything close to the final line, so that you have a chance to weigh in on that particular topic. The other issue that is problematic out there is they want to ditch the Information Network Loop that they were required to install years ago that connects all our town buildings for information technology. It's kind of like a stranded asset, they want out of that business, there's a cost to take over that asset. We prefer not to own the asset because it's, it's actually kind of aged now, but I don't want to be in that business and most towns don't. So, we have a bit of a negotiation as it relates to keeping Comcast on the hook to maintain that infrastructure there, so that's essentially the three components of the contract.
Anything else? Under Town Administrator, oh, we have...
Yeah, COVID-19, I used to, a quick update on that was, I sent you a memo earlier today about lifeguard coverage. So, the students are going back to school, so that's going to affect our lifeguard coverage. So, Amy Howell, the Acting Director of Recreation, had provided some information on that. Also, I gave you the town's latest report. The information from the DY presentation was a little dated on the number of test positives. We're at 134. We have one active case right now. 130 people have recovered. We're following 120 people though, and three deaths in town. So, you know, interestingly enough, when we were going into the summer season, we were all kind of concerned and mindful of a potential summer spike. Didn't seem to materialize, and I think we're out of the worst part of it right now. So, I feel pretty good that what we have done in town has been admirable to keep it to a manageable level, so...
The next item, under your items, is the recent complaints about...
Yeah, so the dissect group is going to meet and they've sent out an invitation to the board and for a four o'clock meeting at the site on August 27th to take a look at things. And one of the things that's mindful on their radar screen is, is lessons learned from this year in coming up with a strategy, if you will, for a request for proposal for next year. With that packet is a number of neighbor-related complaints that have occurred. They do believe that what will happen at the site is they'll come back here to have a discussion, so if you're going to participate, you could always probably pick it up here on that topic. And some of the topic of discussion will be how to mitigate the complaints associated and whatever. The other excellent news for the town of Yarmouth was the announcement today of the million-dollar Seaport Council Grant. That's excellent work, yeah. It's, the public press releases are out, I want to thank the entire team, led by Kathy Williams, on that effort. And, you know, it's an expensive proposition, what we're trying to do, and I think just a couple of years ago, it seemed like it would be an insurmountable obstacle, but it looks a lot better today than it did. So, nice work and we look forward to further improvements on the site, so...
I just wanted to just mention to the board, under the, with respect to the drive-in site, I've actually gone out to that site in the evening to get a better handle, at least from my own perspective, on noise and some of the things that we've heard about. I've also spent some time in the neighborhoods, I've actually told several neighbors that, you know, they should contact me if they would like me to come out and actually listen here. And that's, that's something that's still standing, so I'm very lucky there, so I'm hearing. I will say, at least based on my observations, that there is a significant level of effort going on now to try to mitigate and address complaints, but as I said, I think we'll have more discussion later, but in the meantime, I just want to let the other board members know that I've certainly taken time myself to try to learn first hand. I used to sneak into the drive-in when I was a kid and I've taken that liberty again and it's been quite, it's quite educational, I learned a lot. And as, like I said, there's certainly, there's a seriousness being taken to all of this, which ought to be acknowledged, so... And I see, I'm assuming you folks are here from the neighborhood and you could... Well, we appreciate you being here. And we're going to adjourn shortly, but I think I'm more than happy to, you know, spend a little bit of time hearing more about your concern. So, with that, unless there's any other business to finish with the board, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
I just want to make sure we're going to have enough...
Yeah. Everybody on the board has the handout on the details of that.
And did you talk about the wastewater resource planning? Have you?
Yeah, I just, I worked that in as part of the upcoming agenda as it relates, yeah, where we're presently at with that. You know, CDM knows that these forecasts of destruction projections all have to be recalibrated.
Very good. All in favor of the motion to adjourn? Opposed? And carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.